Open meeting. All that Ken have the floor, we're gonna talk about Jefferson first and.
Yeah, so alright, so um I know at a past meeting um it was discussed that it'd be more beneficial to kinda get in detail um outside of a council meeting, so that was um the purpose of this meeting, so the agendas I've been floating around. Um I emailed those out too, so if there's any questions prepared or anything like that. We'll start with Jefferson Street, that's that's even got probably the more um urgent timeline I'd say from a just trying to you know get that constructed this year, um so from a schedule standpoint, I'll kinda lay that out too. Um for anybody that wants to flip through that, but um so in general, I'll kinda just go through the agenda, we'll make it real informal on like hey, let's talk about this part of the street, or you know this or that. Um we can jump right into the plans, kinda look at them as a group, mark things up, I know um some of the and just for anyone's history too, like we were, we started this project um what in maybe twenty sixteen or and then I think it stalled in seventeen.
Yeah.
Um and then, so then I think it became um kinda more urgent than kinda gets kickback started, so in general, um just to kinda some updates from the from when we left off. Um at thirty-six, um thirty-six and Jefferson, you know N dot had done the resurface, they did the new ADA ramp there on the corner southwest corner. Um so we went ahead and modified the layout to accommodate that. Um there's also the recent building demolition and new parking lot plans on the southwest corner of Jefferson and York. Um so with that said, there's also been um previous communication last go around with um the Mark Vanderheiden on the on the east side to talk about you know some of the um some of the improvements there and how they would affect future improvements he may have as well proposed, um so um some more recent changes we made as well. Um the alleyway, so behind thirty-six saloon and then the alleyway that would go behind the buildings. Um we've 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 shrink the entrance going east um behind his or behind that um thirty-six saloon.
Well, we went back to this regular width.
Correct.
Yeah, not double wide, yeah.
Um so with that, we went back to the original width of the alleyway entrance. We then added another entrance um to the parking lot off of Jefferson for uh two-way traffic, so kind of in and out access.
Now that'd be about twenty-four feet wide, is that standard typical twenty-four?
Yeah, so commercial drive in dot standards anywhere from twenty forty.
Okay.
So twenty-four will get you two twelve lane pad, two, yeah.
Well, looking at your your drawings, I I was trying to figure out the scale here, uh so that's twenty-four. And it looks like you got fifteen feet here, I think, right in there, but then you've got another, the total width here I believe is about thirty feet, like here to here.
Yeah, and this could all get.
Well, here, you know, cause he couldn't be here tonight, he's gonna be out of town, but I I he had the old drawing from twenty sixteen seventeen, I took this over there and I said, Mark, you know, what do you want me to convey as far as your 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 thoughts here, you know, originally there is an access here already, so basically we're just keeping that, it'll be more defined defined than what it is now, but he was saying, well, as long as I've got a car length here to park, which I figure I looked up, it's about twenty eighteen twenty feet standard length for a car.
Yeah.
So he was, you know, he was just wanting twenty feet here, we, if you had this twenty feet, that'd be fine, I mean, he could park a road car like they do now, and then you've got your twenty-four feet here and it could, he, the lot would be utilized pretty much how it is now. Uh but you don't quite need, I don't think thirty, I think that's thirty feet if I got my dimensions scale right on these drawings, so I I guess, I mean, is there a problem by going shrinking that down any, it'd be about ten feet.
We, yeah, thi- this is all subject to, I mean, that, the really, the more critical path, we were getting the plans updated um based on any changes to get the plans to utilities.
Mm-hmm.
So any subsurface stuff, we've been coordinating with, we've already sent them these plans to kind of um to make their relocation plans.
So what do you want to do, are you wanting to widen his entrance?
No, no, the alley, the alley stays the same, and this this will still be twenty-four feet, just this could shift down this way some, so it'd just be about twenty foot there, that's all really all I think you would need, and that would give him more, I think, parking back this way, if this is all shifted that way.
Yep.
If that's, you know, technically feasible.
Yeah.
Uh gee, I just make that a little 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 less wide there, so everything can go south as far as that entrance into his lot, that's kinda where it's at now.
So are you moving this bump out right here to the south too?
Yeah, this is this all, this entry be moved down that way.
This driveway would just be shifted.
About ten feet.
Ten feet.
Uh.
So what?
Go ahead.
As long as he said, you know, as long as he's got, he was saying eighteen, but looking it up, you probably wanna go twenty, most vehicles are about twenty feet these days, except your compacts, but your bigger vehicles. If you get a crew half duly, you're gonna be in trouble, but most of them.
What we'll do, we'll, we will, we'll kinda draw that in.
He'll still have entrance on.
York, uh yeah, York.
Yeah, so maybe the big trucks go through there.
Well, he's hoping, I think, that they'll just not do that.
Park across the street?
A park in the park, a park in public parking, uh so yeah, that was the only thing he expressed to me, Ken. Uh since we're gonna leave the alley the same, he said, well, I can continue parking like I am, uh just give me enough width before this entry.
So how how long is that north, that north bump out gonna be? I mean, if you put a regular bump out where it come back in here and here, how what what how kinda room you gonna have in there?
Width wise.
You mean this one, north and south, David?
Yeah, I mean, you're if you're gonna shift everything to the south, that's gonna make that north bump out, that's gonna be one hell of a long bump out.
A little bit longer, ten feet longer, well, it's gonna be almost equivalent, it'll be a little longer than what we have here.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that right now they're even and you're gonna move, you're gonna move the 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 east side, so they're gonna be offset anyway, so.
Is there still gonna be parking between the?
So that, so that, yeah.
The way it says right now.
That's kinda the challenge that you, so okay, okay, so I guess it's a trade-off, and that's kind of like, these are the good things to talk, like, you know, right now, as it stands.
You have.
Yeah, so we've, we've looked at a couple different alternates, so one of them could have been where we could have kept, if you would have kept that drive in the location we've shown, you're, we're getting down to like three diagonal spots, kind of in that, so with that space there, you can only get a couple there, so I guess the thought was if you know, the parking's to be constructed, so I guess the other question was too, the drive location on the west side of the street was kind of up in the air and we weren't really sure about that either.
Well, that's not our property here, I mean, that'd be the bank property.
Okay, so we'll maintain the location.
So we wouldn't have any say as far as we could, well, we don't wanna block.
What I'm hearing is the county employees will have to be released a little earlier on Friday so that.
Well, I didn't know there were even gonna be parking there, I mean, that's that's their, that's their issue, that's not our issue. Uh, we're just creating the option, that's all we're doing, right? Um so what's your point, Davey, I think you don't, you don't think you.
Well, I mean, that's gonna be.
It's gonna be quite a run.
It's gonna be a long bump out, is what I'm saying.
Well, how how wide is that? But now, let's go back to all, go back to three car, the 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 three parking spots, doing that, we'd have to get into or out of a right of way, correct?
Yeah.
If we maintain.
Yeah, and you kinda see, kinda had these other dash like lines in there, that was sort of closer.
See that more up there.
But yeah, the the, I mean, with with going with this, so yeah, so it all stays within right of way, um essentially kinda how we show it, so, and and we've been if you see things that are off just a little bit on the dimensioning, we've been updating the line work and maybe the dimensioning and arrows don't match, so if you see that, but generally speaking, I mean, yeah, you would have a, um I don't know if I would necessarily say, it would be more of a longer buffer um between the sidewalk and the roadway and the curb, like behind the curb and gutter.
Well, how wide is that buffer, I, I, the original specs had it as a grass buffer, I mean, how long is that?
So it it's really, it's really dictated at where we put the sidewalk.
How wide the sidewalk, is it standard four feet?
I think we're at like a six.
Oh, really, six?
I mean, we have a lot of width there, so I guess it kinda.
Well, it's kinda nice, I mean, uh.
Supposed to be at least five feet.
It's five feet ADA, so minimum's five, okay.
ADA, so two wheelchair can pass at the same.
Yeah, okay. It's really a balance of, you know, the sidewalk can go, it, I mean, I guess it can shift closer to the roadway and have less of a buffer and more.
Well, how, if you have a five-foot sidewalk now, which would be standard or code, what would be their grass strip there?
Really, wherever we wanna make it, I mean, that's, yeah, cause as you can see.
Not sure I get into his parking.
Yeah, exactly, it's a trade-off balance of like, do we wanna?
Well, like over here on this bump out, I mean, this is a sidewalk here.
And it all, I I guess, the way we started, started things too, on the location of this, was how consistent do you wanna make the sidewalk in front of the property, just west, you know, adjacent to the property, essentially, we would replace that, then we would, you know, you could stripe for the diagonal parking right there. So then it's all, well, if you push that sidewalk further there, then it, then it becomes even more of a jog than that, and then you're jogging it back.
Well, I don't, I don't.
I mean, it's not a, it's just things to point out that, yeah.
What could we plant in here, or do we wanna plant anything, and we have the maintenance issue concern and.
I don't think we wanna plant anything in there.
Well, what about some trees or something somewhere in here, little ornamental trees or? I mean, grass.
Sure, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think grass.
Grass is the highest maintenance thing.
Yeah, and I mean, if we're gonna plant trees, I think they would be planted in a, in a plot where we, I mean.
Well, you could go in here, I mean, is there enough room in there to throw a couple, I don't know, whatever ornamental trees typically put in a section like that, uh.
How wide is it, Ken?
Um, seven, yeah, I mean, it's seven, eight feet right now, how it's, how it's drawn, so.
Be okay for the short term, but.
Whatever's low as maintenance is what we need.
Yeah, I mean, I I didn't know we were even considering having, I mean, I don't mind the trees, I definitely don't want grass, and I don't want a grass strip, I don't think you do either, do you? I mean, I, wouldn't you rather have concrete?
Is that gonna be our maintenance through here?
It's our right of way.
It's our right of way.
I mean.
Yeah.
I didn't know how it was, cause he always took care of that, sit around that sidewalk up here.
And he probably would.
Well, he probably would on his side, cause he's a little OCD, even though he wouldn't have been, uh, I think he, he does a good job of taking care of his front. Uh, oh well, so be it, but um, yeah, this particular owner is kinda conscientious, uh, you know, over here, that'd be definitely the town over here.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, so I don't know, I mean, grass would be nice, but it's the highest maintenance thing, the lowest maintenance thing would be concrete, which is kinda cold and industrial. Uh, you know, you go the alternative, you've got some uh decorative rock and some trees, I mean, you guys do this more often than us, what do you typically see?
We're grass.
Typically sod, we would sod it, and I mean.
I think that'd be, I know it's more maintenance, but I think that's more appealing.
Well, it is, give the place for the dogs to go. Uh, well, you ought to see all the, well, I want to go there, but anyway, yeah, they do like to go and grab. They're dogs. Well, we need to kinda hammer this out, don't we?
So from a schedule standpoint, um this would, you know, I'll kinda step back into that, so, okay. So if the construction is completed um before cover bridge, giving even a ninety-day window for construction, which will most, will be pretty tight. Um even backing into sitting and all that, we'd have to bid the project by Memorial Day to give any sort of window.
Well, that's fine, I mean, I I was hoping we could shoot maybe a few weeks before that, uh.
Really, yeah, and then the critical driver right now is working with the, and I, we just talked about center points, the relocations, but you know, for the gas main. Um but we've been working with Cody for, you know, the water main of some questions and sanitary. Um and then we've avoided the relocation of that power pole, um so really, the utility relocations are getting more and more.
Firm.
Let, yeah.
Yeah.
So really, once we get the commu, and then, so then it's really just getting the contract book and everything finalized and advertised and out to bid and everything, so.
Well, we're definitely in a timeline here that we need to be uh aware of, but uh, I mean, I don't know, we 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 need to figure out, uh, so with the utilities under control, we've got that pretty much.
That, yeah, we got, yeah, we got the plans updated enough to get to them, to know where the storm was and everything, and.
Uh, so electric, any water sewer, um, well, so where we back to, basically, we got this entrance kinda figured out. We know this entrance has to stay, that's staying the same, oh, as far as this parking lot, that's the other thing, you know, this wasn't even involved back when we started twenty sixteen, now that it is. I mean, that's something that, where's Roger at? You know, we we uh, um, I mean, typically, an entrance to this lot, where would it, where would you wanna put it, as far away from the intersection, I mean, I would think.
On York.
That's what I would guess.
The one entrance already from the plans.
Where you at, Roger, go over there, look at this thing.
Come in here, buddy.
You know, we would be, you know, this is our lot right here that we just just uh.
Demolished.
Demolished, you know, and here's Je- here's Jefferson, there's York, I mean, where on here would you anticipate putting the entrance, I would assume it'd be down here.
That that's fine, in the middle somewhere down there, that's I think what we propose for it.
For the most parking spots, I would think you'd wanna kinda have a one-way in and out.
Well, this is connected here.
Yeah, but we don't own that.
You don't own it.
I thought Jack's own like right uh, right behind to the south of their building, that row along there, I thought that was theirs.
Yeah.
There, yeah, from the right of way, you can tell there's a little bit more.
So, so there's a little bit more here that belongs to them?
Yeah.
Well, I think how to maximize parking, I guess, is that what you would wanna consider when you do your entries.
Well, right now, what we did, we ended up with a gravel lot altogether, we, you know, we didn't mark it or anything because we have, we don't have the asphalt uh proposed for it so far. But with the entry where it is here and this entry coming in, because inevitably, they're gonna end up using this entry, cause now you have a flat area here that's.
We're right, they will unless we put up a boundary.
Well, we were gonna put some green spaces here and and potentially block that, but that was not the consensus, we replaced the green spaces along this parcel right here. That's gonna be all, all these two are gonna disappear, and they're gonna be over here, and there's a clean cut of the asphalt now where the gravel just gets into all the asphalt.
Right, right, that's what we have now, but if we build a lot in there, what, you're proposing to do the same thing, have an entry here and an entry here?
Well, no, if if you end up with this being a permanent lot, if it does not get developed in the future for a building, cause right now.
Well, we're gonna build a lot in the next hundred and twenty to hundred or so days is our goal.
As a permanent.
As a permanent, I mean, that's, I think that's where we're going, yes, yes.
Okay, and then you have dual entry off of here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Was there enough room?
Obviously, people are still gonna use this, but if he can, if he doesn't allow them to use it, if he creates a blockage here or puts something here that blocks them, there's enough room for.
Well, I don't know what we wanna do, that's what you're, that's what you're for, I'm just thinking, you know, we we we, what's a way to maximize our park parking in this lot? I mean, if they come and go here, they could screw up the parking organization out here.
Well, the way we're gonna design it here, it's gonna be one entrance in and out, and then we're gonna mark all this parking to maximize it with with a lane in between. So you're gonna come in, and you're gonna have parking all this way, and then parking this way, and you can back in and.
Okay, so there's enough room to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good, so that, so we don't have to worry about anything here, if we do the entrance here, and this, I don't know what we'd wanna do over there, I don't know if we wanna keep that open or not.
Maybe that's where we put our charging station.
Well, maybe, okay.
Along here?
Yeah.
So, so we we know we're gonna do the entrance down here, so it doesn't affect anything here, okay, that's good. That's what I needed to know, and I think they need to know for for their their work.
What we did the other day, they had questioned, cause their sidewalk there doesn't match up with this, so I told him, go ahead and shoot straight off of that sidewalk, bring it down. And what he was saving by putting this post in, stop sign in, would take care of the extra concrete to fill that out to that blacktop.
Okay.
He said it'd probably come out in the wash, so.
Well, makes sense, line them up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would, it would take away the, you know, you got a curb here too.
Uh-huh.
So it was gonna add just a little more concrete to that curb to fill that in.
Is he gonna pour that now?
Yeah, it was supposed to be, he was gonna start on it today, but then I think it got put off the next week.
I mean, you guys are involved with that real, right, I mean, as far as.
McCollum, McCollum's going, he's got a guy that does it, but.
So how much?
But I mean, you're gonna have to be involved to the point where, I mean, that'll be a permanent.
Right.
The sidewalk and the cross, yes, those should be permanent, yeah.
So you're gonna have, I mean, so this entrance will be poured and everything now, and then when they do the kickouts, I mean, this'll, I mean, we're just not gonna be tearing up anything, going back over.
It stops right here.
Right.
And then the other sidewalk would come down here and meet meet up with it.
So you guys are doing the sidewalk now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cause it.
Yeah, the whole, the whole north side is gonna be sidewalked and and everything.
They're not doing anything with Jefferson, but York's gonna have the whole sidewalk and the entrance cut.
So where's Shannon gonna stop, I mean, he, is he stopping here?
He's stopping right here.
Okay, well, I mean, this kickout is gonna be part of.
Well, they'll have to, they'll.
Well, it's a small section to worry about.
I mean, just to get grades and everything to work, there, I mean, there may be a panel or two sacrificed.
It's a small section to worry about, but we're getting the walk, put it back in immediately here, we gonna have an entrance here, some kinda apron, okay, okay.
We can modify spot elevation grades and make the drainage work, that's.
We're gonna go, we talked about fourteen feet, but we're about thirteen feet of green space down here, I think that's whatever works, is that okay with you guys?
Sure. You're easy.
Put here or up there?
I mean, we, we wanna help, I mean, as far as where you, where we put things, I mean, obviously, our concern is just to try to replicate what we already have.
Uh-huh.
So, Ken?
We can handle that part.
The drainage on this situation here, where's our drainage over here, we have a drain somewhere right here, guys, right?
I think we're gonna go thirteen feet basically east, now, I don't know what the length of it is, is that sixty feet or?
There's a storm, where's our storm grade here?
About eighty.
All that, all this right here.
Okay, okay.
Sixty, eighty feet.
Well.
And I just to the, from the sidewalk to the Brad's little.
Okay.
Brad's little thing.
Well, I guess.
It's eighty, probably eighty feet to the pole.
My concern is, okay, where are we gonna drain this lot to? The lot has a natural grade already kinda going north until the, so where where are we gonna drain it to, what were you thinking, Roger?
We we did not implement any additional grading uh drainage in here, we sheet flowed it down to the curb, and it would be caught in a, in a catchment here.
Okay, what's this, this is a manhole here, what's that?
Well, we'll need to coordinate then with that.
Yeah, this corner, this corner, yeah, the drainage here needs to be coordinated with wherever our drainage is here, I guess is my point, uh, so I don't know where all that's at. But, but yeah, we wanna, we wanna try to get this paid done by, well, what'd be nice is to have both these drawings specs together and put it out to bid at the same time, the same contractor.
Yeah, I was under the impression we're gonna let the gravel sit for about a year before we try to.
No, and I hadn't. Was that?
We did talk about that.
No, I thought we were gonna get it all done this year.
I mean, if that's your wish, that's fine, but.
Well, I guess my thought is.
When we originally talked about it, we talked about leaving it gravel for a while so that it can compact really good.
Well, they're compacting now, aren't they?
They are, they're compacting it, but, yeah, there's.
I mean, you you can do it that way.
I just, that's kinda what I was always thinking, I didn't know, uh, I mean, what are you guys thinking?
I think it'd be nice to wrap it all up together.
Well, we're gonna have contractors in, if we can get it all tied together at one time, we might save a little money there.
Well, aren't they using the roller on it down there now?
Yeah, they're compacting it, they're, they're compacted the subsoil, I think, that's probably, yeah, and then they're rolling the gravel.
They are, they're putting fifty threes on it right now, which would set it up for asphalt, but again, you know, my understand, my understanding was I did not know what exactly was gonna happen to that lot, whether it's gonna become a permanent parking lot.
Yeah.
Or a new developer can come in and put a new building in there, whatever.
We're doing this all for Main Street and downtown Parkham.
And Courthouse and Coles.
Well, that's your, that, that's their business, that's their business, but what is offering the opportunity for?
For me, for me, if this is gonna become all asphalt.
Yes.
It will require me to do a little bit of redesign and capture the flow in the parking lot, rather than ditch it onto the road.
Right, so you like maybe do a reverse?
It'll go really fast, yeah.
So maybe do a little bit of a uh drain to the center and bring it down and tie it into down here?
Possibly, yes, that may be the easiest way to go, put put a couple of catchments in.
Yeah.
And and bring it and tie it to the storm.
Okay.
Again, you know, I I was understanding as I think Jeff was.
Well, it's kinda evolved, it's kinda evolved quickly.
For a bit.
And we got a decent amount of, I mean, we can, I mean, we have our trunk line right there, so how, we need to coordinate getting the drainage into that, I mean, we got the room there, there's no other utility.
Yeah, I mean, you have a catchment right there, you got your trunk line, you you give me elevation right there, and I can work backwards and and make it happen.
So is there enough parking or enough space in there to park in the center lane of that, or is it just gonna be all outside angle parking, I mean, the outside edge is angle parking?
I will do a full layout, now that I know it's gonna be full asphalt, with markings and represent it to you guys with the drainage as well, that way you can look at it in its entirety. And what we do will maximize uh parking, and just off the bat, I, there probably is not gonna be anything in the center. It's probably gonna be a twenty-four-foot lane in the center for them to go back in and out of, and then your typical parking spaces, but we'll play with a couple of layouts and see what we can maximize.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're here tonight to get this, yeah, I I I, maybe one time we probably did talk about that, Jeff. Uh, but I guess since we're doing, at that time, I'm not sure we were talking about doing Jeff.
Yeah, we we weren't.
So that's kinda how it all evolved.
Started coming up with the thing, but, so, so what you wanna do is you wanna go ahead and you wanna work toward black topping that this year also.
I think we should, we're we're doing the street, might as well do the lot and get it all done.
Well, then we need to get on the ball real quick and design it for asphalt, so that way he's not overlaying fifty threes on there that we have to peel back later.
Oh.
I mean, if you're thinking that quickly.
Yeah, I I think, I, I'm just one person babbling over here.
It's gonna save you on the fifty threes and the hauling off of the fifty threes later on, and we should have enough of a a good base to to go asphalt immediately.
Yeah, well.
What's what's your vision, Dave, of of the green space, what are you all?
I don't really have a vision, I mean, just a place for people to, I mean, I figured the uh expanded metal tables uh in ground and nothing, I mean, nothing fancy, just, I mean, some, something to.
And would that be in grass, or would that be?
Well, I don't know if we've got that far yet, I mean, we're. Yeah, and here's another thought too, though, as we were talking about that. We mentioned the the charging uh stations, so if we're gonna go ahead and put in the blacktop, we're gonna wanna go ahead and put in conduit for the electrical.
Yeah.
And I know we talked about uh doing maybe even some kinda clock or or visitors thing on there at one point in time in some location. So we need to settle on that too, so we can run electric to it as well.
I would say, for me, I would have that somewhere in the, in the, as far as the parking lot part of it, I would have it in the southeast corner somewhere. I mean, it would be looking at, I mean, if you was coming on thirty-six, turning on to Jefferson North, it would, you would see it, so.
You've got a big clock, though, or did I dream that, you know, oh, okay, I always make.
Well, okay, so.
Did you have a question, Steve?
Yeah, I mean, if this is public comment, I mean, I I hear an awful lot of it, we're doing things right now without it sounds like a good vision of what we're trying to do, it's, I mean, parking, 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 but part of it is, you know, community development and and the economy, getting people to stay here and wanna be here, you know, we had a good plan for the York, North Jefferson, um, the whole parking area there. There's need for parking that's attractive to our visitors to wanna stay, that usually involves some degree of shade, it involves some degree of ability to amenities, whether it be tables and stretching, we've got the issue now with uh putting in stations, not really knowing exactly what's the optimal place for that. Gets a lot harder once you put in the concrete, we get kind of a general sketch, but it, I'm concerned that we've really thought through what the potential for this thing should be, it's right behind community foundation, which is pretty important to our our community, our economy, and what we do there, how's it gonna impact the property that they have, I mean, it's a really key piece of real estate, and while it's easy to say parking, how you do parking can make a big, big difference on whether people utilize it and how they utilize it, um, and what's gonna happen in the future, I mean, you got some buildings, you know, the old real estate building, you know, what's gonna happen to that in the long run, um, yeah, I mean, you can pave the whole thing over and put people in there, but it it's not gonna be very attractive to people coming through, um, so I mean, what, what's the hurry about paving it right now as opposed to just
Well, I I think.
Putting gravel in there, let people park on the gravel.
It's because we have the other, we have the other project going on Jefferson scheme, I thought, well, we can tie this all together, you know, it'd be nice. I mean, that's why we have Roger with the parking, he's, he's doing the, uh, did the demolition and the specs on that. And, uh, we have him here tonight to try to coordinate with Structure Point, I mean. Yeah, I agree, you want something attractive, but then there's also budgetary limitations in just how far you could go for the attractiveness of it. Uh, you gotta have a trade off there, it'd be nice to have, uh, um, as much green as possible. But then again, you're gonna take away from, from parking if you have too much green space. Uh, you know, the charging stations, we, we've talked about that for some time and the, 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 the demand is slowly growing in the United States for that. So we thought we'd try to put some of those in there.
Green space, I mean, here, I talked about a big park, you just basically talked about enough space that you can have a few trees. I mean, you go to Walmarts and some are just, you know, ten acres of asphalt. Some, they've got, you know, every ten spaces or twenty spaces, they got a little tree tree and they're much more pleasant and better utilized. And it's just those thoughts and coordinating with the thirty-six and their parking lot as far as what they're gonna do in the future. Making that area attractive for a variety of reasons, multi-use, get the most bang for your buck. But, I mean, if you're not sure, keep it gravel, let it settle, figure out what it needs to be and do it in a year or two.
Well, yeah, that, that, and we could still end up going that way, but I, I thought perhaps with the meeting tonight, we could get coordinated here and figure out just what, uh.
Next lot here is.
What, what we, uh.
Can, can I propose something to you?
Well, yeah, Roger.
On that parking space, let me do two or three different renditions.
Well, sure, you, you, now you know.
Some of which have islands in the middle of the parking space with trees in them.
There might be enough there to do.
Perimeter trees, um, and then throw it, throw it back at you guys and see if you like it or not.
Well, yeah, Roger, that'd be good, a few, few op- options there. Yeah, I don't wanna hold up, you know, we, we've got Roger involved, he, he's up to speed on this. You probably should get back to Ken on this.
So did, I guess to that, has that whole Jack's property been acquired by the town? Is that?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a vision for that?
Said, I, I don't know what this other.
I brought Zach and did some major, he did some measuring, but, uh, we're, we're good, we're good on anything. Our, our tentative desire would be, you know, we've got, we, we had fencing right, or right up to, to that. And, and, and so, and we, we would, we would like to replicate that along that east end. And off our gazebo, create a sidewalk paver out to the parking lot. That would have kind of an open area gate to go into the green space there and then out into the parking area. I mean, that's, we got a lot of time to figure this out, but, uh, we're, uh, and if it's not too obtrusive there. Uh, we'd be happy to go ahead and include it in our mowing schedule and everything else, you know. It just depends on what, you all put together what you want and, and we'll do our best to.
I'd like for you to work with Roger on it, I mean, just.
Well, yeah, if you're gonna have a walkway coming out.
Yeah, I mean, directly front of the gazebo, straight out about forty.
So that'd be a spot where you wouldn't want a parking car perhaps, you'd just have a walkway. I mean, that, that's really a neat idea, guys.
Those, those are things, I mean, we need to address because if you are moving, if, if it stays gravel. Then we have time to address all these issues and go with it. If you need it to turn into asphalt very quickly.
Well, what do you define as quickly?
Before the festival?
Before the festival.
Yes, okay, that's, 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 yeah, okay.
If we need to move that, that quickly and make sure that it gets, um, done in time. I don't mind expediting the design, I can do that, but I need those ideas. I need to know where you want your walkways and, you know, what are we trying to do with this parcel before we design it and then we redesign it and redesign it. Cause right now, um, the sidewalks are gonna be put in by McCullough, which, which are fine. They, they kinda fit where they need to go, um, it's all about the internal part of it. Um, the in and out apron is appropriate where it should go. Um, again, it's just the, the semantics of how do we break that inside and make it pretty.
Yeah, are you guys gonna, are you thinking about a wall? Are you thinking about bumpers or what, I mean?
For, for what?
To keep people in and out and.
The traffic.
Adjusting, yeah, I mean, for everything, as far as the traffic flow, where to park.
We should, this, this is gonna end up being used in everything, unless we block it, okay? But we shouldn't depend on this entrance, we should focus on this entrance as being the in and out for the parking lot. And then if we wanna put some charging stations, you need to tell me how many charging stations do you want and I can put all those on my plan so you can see them.
I think we were thinking two there and maybe one at the east though.
Two and two, I don't know.
Well, there, from what I understand, the, the, the center grade, the middle grade of those. Is like seventy-five thousand, is that sound about right?
There, there was, there's.
Over the cars.
There's a lot of money thrown out there to, to this, uh, uh. Kinda thing, word of one. Anyway, there should be some, some type of grant process out there for these, I would think.
I think they're.
Yeah, they're coming out with some, I talked to you, input about that, and they put me, uh, gave me some information on a. Vendor by the name of Charge Point.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That was it.
Yeah, you brought that up. Well, okay.
So, look, just to finish up on the charging stations, if you need, tell me, if it's two. What I'll do is for now, we'll just do stub outs before these guys come in and just make this all pretty and we dig it all, all back out. We'll look at where we're gonna bring electricity in, we'll stub them to where the stations are. And they can lay dormant until there's a grant or something, cuz you're not gonna get the grant in time to put those stations in. So we'll, we'll stub them in and just hold off until the grant comes in for the actual implementation of the stations.
Yeah, yeah, that's kinda what we were thinking originally, cuz we didn't anticipate getting those done. But we have the power there, it's, it's just a matter of installation. So we need to figure where they're gonna be.
Well, if we're just laying conduit, I mean, I'd lay enough to put five or six in there cuz it's not gonna cost that much.
You might wanna expand, right, right? Someday may, everybody may be.
Yeah, I mean, we may not ever see it, but somebody might, so.
I think about doing that, well, we won't pull a wire till we get ready to do that, so it's no big deal.
Well, I'd just say you lay them out here in the backside of the lot somewhere on this side, wouldn't you, I mean? For lack of any other idea, I try.
I mean, let, let's start with two so we don't get up good parking spaces for cars that don't exist yet.
Okay.
Right now, you know, if you don't have a charging station, you don't have a car, electric car parked there. Uh, if we put two in there for now and then we can see where we go from, you can always expand.
Okay. Well, Ken, back to, back to the street, what, what do you need from us tonight?
So, I mean, really, all this input's great, I think the other thing that we had, we were kinda getting into. And we'll coordinate too with the conduit and everything, the lighting, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, with current, uh, material delays and such, um.
We don't have to stub them out, probably.
So Jeff has been coordinating with Hall of Fame representative, um, and we are considering. We're gonna be requesting to possibly the town, or recommend for the town to purchase those poles. Because of, here's the, here's the thing, if we wait for a contractor to get notice proceed. We're not gonna have the lights up in time for the festival, so.
Okay.
And we're continuing with the ones we used on Howard.
Similar, they've changed a li, they tweaked a little bit, but it's not, I don't think it's very.
They'll look pretty doggone close.
And we're just doing the regular post through here and we're doing the arms at the intersection or whatever?
They're just, yeah, they've been, um, delayed, so in general, at the intersections to match Howard and Market. It's the mast arm kind of, or illuminates the intersection. And then, um, same here, there was a light that was removed as part of the end up projects, we proposed to put one there. Um, and then light pole, light pole, yeah, and then the post tops are scattered throughout.
I think it was a total of six, maybe, that I saw in the design for the poles and lights and everything.
Yes.
And it, uh, for, just for budgetary purposes, it's not a quote or an estimate. But, um, budgetary purposes, about thirty-five K.
Total?
For, for the lights on Jefferson.
For the material.
The materials, that doesn't include installation, but that's the materials.
And we can, yeah, we'll put that into the contract book to say contractor, here's the material, coordinate with Rockville, yeah.
I guess what, what I need from that, Ken, is, or from the board rather, is how you wanna go about doing that. Because, uh, Hall of Fame, of course, they, they don't sell, they have distributors. And there's like three or four different, uh, distributors out there, I think, that, that handle that.
We need to figure out what.
If he doesn't.
Does that sound?
Continue.
To order them.
To, to go ahead and get, uh, firm estimates or quotes from three vendors, you know, and, and then.
I think that's a good idea.
The other suggestion that, uh, was given to me was, excuse me, to bid them out.
Well, look at it this way, with the grass and trees and everything.
But I'd like to go ahead and get those, that process going.
Since me, I don't care. What do you guys wanna do with the, the, uh, strips? You wanna do grass, rock? On, on these bump outs, these long bump outs?
Well, I, I was just telling David, I, you know.
Whatever you wanna do.
We can try some grass and some trees in there and if the grass becomes a problem, we can take out the dirt and put a rock in, if it doesn't, so. But I, maintenance is the issue, I know.
Well, you might need pavers too.
Well, you could always do pavers, I've seen that used around in areas, those are nice, uh.
Like the lattice or a front end.
Yeah, more expensive up front to do, I think.
One of our woodchips.
No, no, no.
No?
Don't wanna do those.
No?
Yeah, that.
Any thought to design to where they might, you know, be a temporary hole in area for some of the rainwater that's gonna come off there that we're gonna have to.
Well, there's that too, uh, kinda like what we did at the depot.
Like rain garden.
It's gotta be designed.
Right.
There's, you know, I mean, all these things have problems, but again, you need to consider that cuz that water's gonna, gonna have to be somewhere.
Right, right.
And we can do them and not be designed. There's also ways to just have the rain garden look and we wouldn't necessarily need to fully.
There's a lot of options, but they need.
When you say design, I think we have to accommodate the rain, we can accommodate the rainwater with the structures and then that could be a.
Thought about the surge of rainwater.
I agree, yeah.
Well.
I guess whatever, maybe what the best thing to do is accommodate, you know, what, uh, the design can accommodate future things like this. I think that's, we don't wanna, we wanna eliminate or reduce the amount of rework. That's, I think, the, the best answer to everything.
Well, I just, I mean, how, so, let's just call it a grass strip for right now, how wide is that gonna be?
Seven feet.
Seven, eight feet, yeah.
Which would be.
And it's, a lot of stuff's changing cuz we're, we're getting line work updated.
Strips, do it in two seconds.
Would that be on both sides, Ken?
Yeah.
Okay, the sidewalks here, curve here, that sidewalk, right?
Yeah, and, and see, the, the sidewalk was laid out originally cuz it, that butted up to that building. So there's a lot of play there, I mean, there. But this keeps it consistent from where it starts at, at thirty-six, it's just that straight shot sidewalk.
Right.
To be in the consistent, yeah, that's how we line.
And they're five feet right now, they could go, we could, we can make them six feet if we wanted.
We could go sidewalk six feet and strips five feet, are they seven?
Well, we took another foot off sidewalk, we could almost make them.
Yeah, make them bigger sidewalks and do less grass, I mean, it's.
Yeah, make bigger sidewalks, less grass.
Look at this.
Sure, let's do it.
If we go with grass, we can always go back in and go in with trees, we go with combination trees and pavers, or, or we can just keep it grass. I kinda like to have a few trees, I mean, mark.
I like the trees, I'm not crazy about the grass because I, it's. Well, it's gonna be a ma- maintenance nightmare, I'm telling you.
Let's put retarder on the grass.
We'll drug it. We'll drug the grass.
Drug the grass.
Oh, yeah, that's.
As a guy told me one time, I'm one of five, so you guys decide what you wanna do.
Well.
Make it concrete and we'll paint it green.
Paint it green, okay.
Put astraturk down.
Well.
Happens in Vegas all the time.
Um.
If you put grass down, we're gonna be blowing grass all over the streets and sidewalks and.
Well, you do have that issue. I know Mark was gonna put, he said, I'll buy the damn trees and I'll put one here and here and probably a couple down here. And he has no problem chipping in on this project, since it's gonna beautify, uh, the area, um. You know, I, I think a combination, some minimal grass, minimal grass, I think a combination of some trees and some pavers would be the way to go. Uh, as low maintenance as possible. We're not running, we have, we, well, we all, we all know how our staffing is this summer. We're lucky to get to cemetery mode and we, we need it on a regular basis.
Well, I like the trees, do some kinda landscaping, rock, and then you can put some big stones in there, you know, big, I mean, we, it is Rockville. So we can get some.
What do you need to proceed tonight? How much detail do you need?
Um, the, like you said, I would go ahead, if you're into grass, just go sod.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have that much, and then it's a finished look. You can always come back, put a stone, trees, whatever you want after.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Like the big rocks idea?
So do I, uh, yeah, uh, that'd be the quick and simple time being. I think we can all agree with that, uh, tonight.
Yeah, we'll.
What are we agreeing to?
Well, just, you know, it's simple, clean, just go in there with the, the grass.
Pumble of sod and big rock.
And, 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 uh, you know, that'll get us, get us done and then we wanna come in there next spring and then look at it next summer and do some other work. I, but I think trees in the long run is definitely the way to go, I'm not sure what kind, but we don't want something that gets big, I know that.
No.
Yeah, ornamentals.
One thing that was brought up before that we never really settled on or talked about first was the potential for doing these event boxes.
Yeah, yeah.
Was, um, simp, we did it on, um, Will was part of it on Main Street Speedway. So where vendors are able to, you know, food trucks or whatever, they're able to pull up and they can hook up into a. Hundred and twenty, or two forty volt.
Right.
Connection boxes, so at this time, we haven't fully designed those because we weren't sure if it was something. The town A is gonna get, you know, full use out of, if, or if food trucks nowadays are all self.
You know, I'm not so much thinking food trucks, I'm thinking.
They're self, they have the generator, so is it?
Just vendors is what we're, I think I envisioned vendors for, uh, uh, some of Ban. I wouldn't see, thinking some of our food truck ordinance wouldn't allow some of them to sit up there, would it?
So I didn't know if there'd be enough.
There were some, there were a couple of food trucks up there.
Well, not in this, in this stretch of street, on Jefferson.
Done up people and it seems like there was one or other one.
I don't know.
Before fully designing it, we wanted to kind of make sure there was a need for it that would offset the cost of the.
Doing it.
Yeah.
The main reason why, uh, they did it in Speedway is because they shut that section of road down. And they'll pull in like a semi trailer, they'll have a band up there, all that type of stuff, so they needed that event box. This is, you probably don't need that here.
Well, you know, I envision, like I said, I envisioned vendors sitting up there for different events perhaps someday, but, uh. I was just thinking ahead, what, how it might be utilized, I mean, the band option's pretty much taken care of with the guy just off the street. They, uh, you know, they have the bands, of course, not saying we couldn't do a band, but that's, uh, yeah, I was just envisioning.
He only does it on the exams, we could like.
We could do one a week.
And something we kicked around internally was we can put the boxes in and run, you know, get the conduit and everything laid underneath. So that nothing was, that's just an option to, kinda similar to the hookups of wherever the electric's gonna be pulled for the. Bad for the charging stations.
Yeah.
So, that, I just wanted to make sure we talked about stuff that was talked about before and wasn't implemented.
Right, yeah, I, I don't see any water, water, uh, being put through there for, for any purpose. And we talked about that in the backflow and all.
Oh, the potential for, yeah, water.
And the electric, you know, it's gonna be very expensive, we probably should take it out cuz nothing's gotten cheaper in the last few years. I was just thinking some simple little boxes, but nothing's simple. What do you got?
Well, I have no issues with putting either one of them in, I mean, it's not like we're putting a hundred of them in.
Well, no, no.
And do you think the, the, I guess from a, it seems that the most opportunity to use it would be then. Maybe just in front of his, or just in front of the thirty-six, or is it?
Up in this section, they do a lot of events, they, they block this street about eight, ten times a year already now and, and do events. They have, uh, various things going, but usually it's up in here that they're blocked, uh.
Okay.
Okay, okay, Lou, see you.
Thanks, Louie.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I just have some with there, at least, at least we have some, some option there for some power, um.
So yeah, so.
Where's the water at right now for Jack's, for the lot, Cody?
Right here.
Where's our meter pit?
Right here, Jeff, or Dan. So what else you need from us for Jefferson?
Um, really just to, you know, so we're, um, and just to give an update too. Um, the other questions, coordination we would need to do is, so we're right now on track to. Start advertising at the beginning of May. Um, we were gonna plan to advertise in the Park County Sentinel and Terre Haute Tribune. Does that make sense? I mean, does that work? Okay. Is that, okay, that's what I was gonna ask, if anything made. Um, and then has there been preference either way on bid opening? Do you want the bid opening? And it's all kind of a schedule thing, but have you been opening the bids on council meetings?
Yeah.
That's what you prefer? Okay. That works.
Open at council meeting.
So then we would just target, I'll need to get the, I'll make sure I'm at the right meeting dates and everything.
What do you got? Are you gonna let them on what day? Say the first of May? No.
So the, the letting, so yeah, sorry, um, the, so the bid opening would be. And once again, I need to look at the calendar dates, but Memorial Day weekend, obviously, we tried to get it before then. So that's a Monday that you're not gonna have a meeting, but then.
Right, our regular meetings be the second and the, and the sixteen. We could, we could have a meeting before that if we need to, to get this project rolling.
Cause the sooner we can get a contractor on board, notice proceed.
Right.
Then they can get.
So once we let it, we have, how many weeks do we have to do it?
So it, it's really, so here, here's the other thing too, just to make everyone aware that, you know, construction right now. Material delays and things like that is, is gonna be up against it to get it all constructed and fully finalized by the. I just wanna be honest with what we're seeing.
Well, we're, you know, the lights are one of the issue, uh, the, the uh, I mean asphalt and concrete's pretty basic. Right now, it might not be enough.
Right, it's, but it's like the water main sanitary material. I just hope, or I just wanted to talk about the expectations with the council that, you know, and, and we can make into the contract that. We'll make the dates to hit that, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. Put our best foot forward and.
So, so uh, what's the date you have to put it out right now? What's your date?
Start, we'd advertise. And I, these dates are, I mean, subject to change whenever the week makes the most sense, um, but then try to open the bids. I would get it before Memorial Day.
So I give them three weeks.
Then it gives contractor or the, the council to award it, um, we'd have to review the bids and then award it a couple of weeks later. Contractor notes proceed, go.
So, so. What, we want it south?
Yeah, I, I think that's it on, let's estimate it's Jefferson. I think. So just in general, inflation has been high, that's just, I mean, across everything. Construction inflation has been high too, like eight, eight to ten percent. We, we typically would have estimates at like four to five, now it's doubling almost. There's a premium that would be to get it done by then, but then also just depends too on. Added cost for the parking lot pavement, if that gets included into this project, so there's gonna be, but maybe that makes more sense. For economy and scale, if you get a pa- if you get a paving company in here to do everything at once, then it's. The, the cost can come down with that.
Yeah, you just don't know. I mean, we don't know what inflation's gonna be a year from now. I mean, it, it's really kind of uncertain times. Uh, I wish the heck we'd done a forty-one sewer north uh, a couple of years ago. It's gone up considerably with the cost on that. So yeah, I mean, Stevie, it's uh, you just don't know which way to go. Okay, so South Market.
Okay, so, um, we had the public hearing, um, we've gotten, just so everybody's seen stakes out there or anything, that's for. Um, right away staking that are in the plans. We've gotten a couple of calls from a couple of different residents. Um, I've been working with Jeff on that. Um, asking about, hey, the stakes are out my yard, what does this mean? Um, appraisers are gonna start coming out, then they look at the stakes and what impact. The right away acquisition would have. So in general, the right away permanent is gonna be ba- basically back to sidewalk, back to sidewalk that's out there today. Any stakes that may be closer to houses or anything is for driveway reconstruction or grading. So it's really, and, and, and the grading for the most part. You know, kinda sticks to what's there. So from the public meeting, um, there were some comments, um, a few, quite a few. Couple on bike lanes versus parking. So I think I just wanted to also make sure that, you know, we're pushing forward with the typical section. That we have and just wanna make sure if there was any additional questions or comments on that, um.
Well, it's gonna be just like Howard.
It'll be just like Howard, yeah. So, um, I just bring this up because it was, um, see if there's any. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page, we're still moving forward with that same typical.
Well, that's my understanding. There's always trade offs. You, you add this, you have to take away that or vice versa. I mean, it uh, um. I think we're, I'm in favor of continuing as we have on Howard.
That was the understanding that the public meeting in December.
Right, yeah. Um, so then I think there are one of the bigger, one of the bigger, um, and. So, okay, I'll kinda step back for a second. From a, from a scheduling standpoint, um, right away acquisition is the critical path. Right now, I mean, that's right away and then getting, um, we talked about utility plans for Jefferson. We gotta do the same thing for South Market. Um, to get the plans out to utilities, we, we just recently, just kind of a general update where the new hope development is. We got new survey data for the pipes that were installed. We can adjust. The storm sewer for the South Market job in front of the new, new hope development. Then we can get the plans updated and ship them out to utilities. They can start developing their reutility work plans. What that means is the gas or the, you know, the telephone, they'll be able to say, I'm going here. The others say, I'm going here, and then we will review it and say, eh, you know, you may need a shift here or there. So those are the critical pieces of the scheduled project development, but there's also design. Um, that's kind of, I think, maybe a big discussion point and, um, opinions and, you know, uh, I guess. Considerations for the courthouse square block.
We'll look back up a second. I, I've heard some conversation about getting your right away done in a certain timeframe, right away acquisition because of the financing for that and what's that all about?
Um, so the fe- yeah, so the federal funds.
Yes.
Um, are tied to, okay, hold on, the, so with the elk, with, with the federal match for the dollars for the construction. Um, there's also a federal match for the right away acquisition services and the land acquisition. So we submitted all that, I've worked with Jeff, um, getting that stuff submitted to NDOT, and then NDOT has to send it to Federal Highway to get approval on it. Um, and we're still waiting on that.
Okay, so.
To hit the, to hit the clock for.
Must be done by the day, do we have?
Um, so we need to bid the project by fiscal year twenty-three, so that means. It, we, we have to bid the project by next May.
Okay.
To, to stay with the federal funds.
Okay.
But we're scheduled for fifteenth of January.
Yeah.
And so that's, I mean, it, it is tight and we've talked about that, um.
We're in pretty good shape. Come on, be optimistic. We, we, we're six months, we're six months.
The right away is what scares me.
Okay, well, we, we've been down that road recently. We'll, we'll hammer it out. We'll, 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 we'll make it work.
Well, yeah, that's.
We'll do whatever we have to do, get her done, um.
But while we're waiting on that, we wanna get the other, the plans just, you know, ready to ro- go, so. And, and I say that, that, you know, things can change within the right away. And but we wanna make the changes before we ship the plans out to utilities to start saying where they wanna relocate to. So that's kind of the, if there's any major updates or things that we wanna consider for the courthouse square, like. Kinda wanted to get that on the table to make sure.
Well, what are the sidewalks with right? Is it all five feet down through the non, uh, uh, there, you have, you have two areas here, urban and residential. So the sidewalks, I mean, they, they uh, I su-.
So everything, so what would be south of High Street?
Yes.
Is all the five foot, five foot sidewalk with a buffer. So the grass buffer, yeah.
Kinda like what we have in Howard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then obviously this is much more unique here. Jefferson has the parallel parking, um, would be on the west side, or sorry, Jeff. Market to the south of High has the parallel parking on the west side. Until you get to Pennsylvania and then it goes back to the, the typical.
Okay.
So really the, um, really the, I know, so once again, these were comments in the public, um, meeting or the hearing. Was that, you know, the, um, questions about the parking in the median, and I know. Yeah, so I'm, yeah, I'm kinda talking square right now.
Back into the.
Um, or is there any?
Urban area.
Um, some other, I'll just kinda throw all these things out there. We can kinda go through whatever order, but there's also, um. We were considering in the project to include amenities such as benches, trash receptacles, um. So now, I mean, this is kind, or this is the time to start evaluating from the town's perspective which type, or you know, what. I mean, so it, cause it kind of sets the stage for the whole square and then also.
Right.
You know, the similar things that are going in the parking lot we just talked about and things like that, so I, I just.
Right, it's something we might wanna replicate in the south side and, and even some on the, on the, on the, uh, east side someday. Well, I know we talked about the zero, uh, well, what do you call it when you don't have a curb, um.
Right, there's no curb head or anything, so.
Zero, uh.
Entry. Yeah.
Is that it?
So, yeah, all the, all, yeah, everything slopes towards the center, so there's no curb.
No curb.
There's no curb head to go up, you know, so, you know, you can walk right from the sidewalk across. But now we have a center median, or we have a center curb right now in the median, cause we have diagonal spots on both sides. And then in the middle, there's parallel.
On one side.
On one side, yeah.
Kinda like, well, well, okay.
So we're switching it, the parking from what it currently is.
Correct, yeah.
Um.
But the idea was, would, our, yeah, cause there's parallel right now here, we thought it'd be more ideal to get more spots. Up against it and then.
I'm, I'm listening.
Well, yeah, um, I mean, parking, parking.
About the west side?
Well, on the west, on, on be on the east side of the median, right now we have, have the di- the angle parking. In one plan, we, I guess right now we're just looking at diagonals, is that what we're looking at or?
So the, yeah, so the pavement marking sheet, which is right here, kinda illustrates that a little better.
Okay.
So then there's a lot of design. Yeah, there's a lot of design details and things too to start hashing out on as far as like, you know, we can't fit.
Here's, here's your hotel, here's courthouse over here.
Like for instance, there's these areas here where we can't fit any more parking. You can't like squeeze in anymore. There's a crosswalk that's like at the mid block. So, you know, what, what do we do with these spaces here, um.
Well, that's where you do some landscape.
That's what I thought it's gonna be.
Right, there's, there's details like that to just start.
And I like the universal access thing, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, that's nice. Basically, uh, yeah, um, you know, but this median, what are we doing here? This, what is that median? What is it gonna be? We haven't decided. How is it gonna be curb, gonna be ball, ballards?
So, a couple, yeah, a couple.
These are parallel right here, right?
Right, so right now there's parallel spots in the, in the median next to a three foot, um, curb head. So basically what's out there today. Um, and, um, yeah, so with that. I don't know if I was gonna save that, but go ahead.
So the problem with the curb, when you get the festival or if you wanna close, and you could make an argument for having some kind of street closure structure here. But the curb is, you know, it's a stumbling block. So if you're gonna park parallel stuff. Rather than using the curb to delineate it, if you had ballards, posts, something that people, when the po- cars aren't there. That the people can freely move around, center, center street lighting, I don't.
Open festival area.
So when there's no, when there aren't any cars parked here, you've got clear access, cause as long as you've got that curb. People are gonna trip over, you, you cut it, you cut it down. Um, that would be one, I mean, I throw that out, I don't, again, you have the detail.
So with that said, you know, at the, man, this was.
If the curb's got drainage structures, and it's just like a, just like a slotted hog floor, I mean, it's flush and it just goes down.
Yeah, we could even have like a, like a great, yeah, like a kind of a swell, concrete swell essentially to get to the great, to get to the.
How many spots do we have in here right now? How many are we showing?
Eight or nine, I think. So yeah, so it's, it's gonna be.
Well, I'm, that's where I'm going. Next thing is, do we want to sacrifice eight for a little more?
To your point, you got parking in there, you have a festival, you're probably gonna say, you guys aren't, nobody's parking along this corridor anyway.
There wouldn't be parking in there then.
Right.
But if you got, as long as you don't have that curb, cause if you got the curb.
We don't want the curb.
Four months ago.
West side?
Two, three foot drop off.
On the west side, y'all.
So somewhere you gotta make up that elevation difference.
How do you do that? You can do lighting.
If we wanna get rid of that.
Wouldn't your angle take care of that?
Have to tweak it and adjust it.
Yeah.
Incorporate into the whole road design, okay, yeah, yeah.
I mean, maybe your drainage is here, that's a low point instead of here, you know, I mean, but tweak it, yeah.
I'm not saying anything about this in a negative manner, it's just a pragmatic matter of fact. We have twenty semis that turn right, right there.
Yes.
And go down that street, uh, every day, you know, under grain trucks, I mean, you know, there's, and uh, so. There's no way they're gonna be able to make that, that bump out, if, if you want it, or if you're wanting to direct.
Well, these are all designed to incorporate a fifty foot, three foot trailer, aren't they? Will, I mean, I've seen them on the bump out we have now, I'm amazed, the drivers that can drive, they have no problems. We have some that can't and.
Pull it back as far as needed.
Yeah, it's a good point, Brad, I, I, these. All the time, and it's a problem.
I think the counter with that though is, you know, frequently we design these things for the truckers that are just passing through and the people that now live here. And shop here into our commerce and enjoy it in the safety of people, we sacrifice that for the guy that just wants to blow through it thirty mile an hour. Like Park said, the good drivers seem to do it. You don't wanna create an unnecessary.
Our officer's still here, but anytime a semi hits a curb, you can ticket them. You aren't supposed to be hitting curbs. I don't believe, believe that's a, an offense you can be written up for. Uh, but anyway, back to the center guys, I mean, do we wanna keep those few spots or not? I mean, what, if we do, don't keep them, what do we do with the space? You know, and that's where something pretty like this comes in. You know, that's why I'm just throwing that out there. I, I, I love the look, again, you got the maintenance thing. But it sure is nice.
Oh yeah, I like, I mean, I.
It's gonna be hard to have a look and not have some maintenance.
Well, I know, I know, I know.
If you want a look, you're gonna have, that's part of the deal.
Well, we can.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, and I know there's businesses up there. Of course, Brad's got several things going on up there. I mean, have you ever seen this?
That's some, I, I think I actually got that from, uh.
That's Louis.
But yeah, it's kinda neat, uh, and I don't know if we wanna go that far down that center, but, but, um. I know we're catch, we'll, we'll catch it big time from some folks for, for. Not maximizing parking, but as Steve brought up earlier, when you, you, these are once in a hundred year projects, my gosh, you try, need to try to incorporate in. Some aesthetic things besides all concrete and black top.
The town is putting a lot of money in another parking lot.
I'll, I'll kinda point this out too. So the, the pavement section is brick on top of, um. Yeah, so it'll be brick essentially on top of concrete pavement, um, so any, I'll just kinda throw this out there, any of those. Green space additions or adding median is helping reduce the amount of that, yeah.
Yeah.
The old, like, that's gonna be. The old, like, that's gonna be, it's a costly section.
Brick and stuff, that's due to the environmental, giving them federal money, cause you can't.
So what kinda edge would be between?
It's out there now, you gotta maintain that for the look.
Yeah, have the look.
And 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 that, so this is, yeah, so the edging, um. I, uh, so, we would anticipate having some sort of concrete header, basically, to be able to. Set the grades for everything to kind of, the bricks to be placed from, to, or, yeah. Um, so that would be up, yeah, the curb on the outside is like a modified curb that wouldn't have a curb head. Um, but that would serve as like the separation between sidewalk and and all that, so.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking, if we do the green space down the center, what would the transition look like between? The green space and the brick?
You'd almost have.
I mean, I wouldn't want it, I would want it to be.
Be like, I mean, I'm kinda making this on the fly, but. If everything's kinda flowing in, it'd be like curb head, curb head, and then have green space in the middle.
So we back there.
One of the things on the green space, just think, just like if you had a parking lot and. You know, there's different, again, you have to drain it, so you have all this, you have a big thing and it's all coming to the middle and having not the whole length. But if you have portions of that. Or you can, you know, capacitor for some of the rainwater for a while, does make a difference, that I don't think goes to. The Voorhees basin, like a lot of it off the area up off of Jefferson, which is already a flood.
Yeah, this is going south, I guess.
Yeah, I think that all hits out and isn't really on farther down, but trying to cut some of that down is. Is important, um, I mean, you wouldn't do the same sort of bio swell that you did at the depot with tall grass, but there's other things that you could. Could do to be kind of a capacitor to hold that, but. I mean, that would be one.
Or is the greens, like, so I guess it kind of.
I'm interested in your opinion, you're looking very hard.
It's sort of a catch one, cause then, so I mean, if that was gonna be used for. Festival time, then is it gonna get trampled on and kinda take?
Well, yeah.
There's kind of, or is it, or if that's collecting all the water, it's gonna get pretty wet, yeah.
Well, but if you have a basin underneath it, it's got the capacity to hold thousands of gallons and over top of it, you've got a bench, you're not, it's not open, I mean, the. Underneath where your feet are, the water can go in, it can be there, can get up, it can go out, but you could. You could get some mixed use, I'm just thinking, someone's gonna design the darn things and it's still gonna be safe, but.
Well, I I yeah, I just wanted to throw out that idea in the center, I don't, I.
If they put a curb up.
Nice, but I can't, I can't really. I like it, but I don't know what I can really pitch, I mean, that's just one personal drawing, I don't know what kinda space we have there or what. Well, I guess we're doing at least eight feet wide for a vehicle to park, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you got eight feet there, so we took that eight feet, you'd have an eight feet strip down through there, you ready? So we had an eight foot strip down through there.
Play with?
You can play with, uh.
Parallel, these are all parallel.
Yeah, there's about eight spots down through here, Brad, I'm thinking, you know, do we wanna, do we want those individual spots or do we want some greens?
But remember, over here, it's.
Well, some people say you need that more.
Versus how many will we have?
Well, we're already cutting down, cause we're doing away with the angle parking, but like, we're adding a nice spot over there on the other side.
I don't know if Rex is losing any of his parking up there.
But, well, and what are we doing in these spots here, that's something that King kinda started with, what are we gonna do with those? And in that picture kinda, I guess, gives us an idea of what you could do, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we got a little more right, I mean, here's the thing too, there's, you know, the right away line that we have the record from and everything, I mean. You can introduce more green space, I guess, in between, right now, the sidewalk is right up against the road.
Yeah?
Nah, oh, yeah.
Green space isn't quite as critical when you get the whole four, courthouse long.
Well, that's all I was gonna say, right?
Some shade and some things that make it appealing, you want that, whether it be solid in the middle with the appropriate amenities or. You know, you don't need a vast expanse, but trying to get. To be able to let people move freely during the festival. You got just a lot of things you gotta give and take, so I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying you gotta put a, a green swale down the middle, but. Just using that efficiently and.
Well, you know, you could.
Two spaces basically on both sides, right, these lo- these large spots right here, if you could do something with those.
That. But, what you could do, instead of doing eight down here, do four, two and two and take, make them a little smaller spot for maybe a little. Something spicy, green, spicy. Yeah. Uh, I'm just throwing out ideas, I'm just free, free, freestyling here, um. Be, I I can go either way, I mean, I'm just seeing what everybody else thinks.
Put your green down the middle and take those ones off the corners?
Well, you could do that, but I really like those, I like the impact of those, especially this, this creates a corridor to me that's really kinda neat.
Fine there, but you're gonna add, you could probably add one or two more spaces in that green spots down there.
You might, you could.
Where's that at, right here?
I didn't think you said we could.
Uh, yeah, so there's restrict, so it's, you don't wanna get the spaces too close to the, to the roadway, the crosswalks. Yeah, so there's a twenty foot minimum.
Once it's in there.
That's twenty, yeah.
You know.
Which we could maybe, uh, yeah, I, we must not be able to fit another, but it's really, we can adjust the spots. Based on where the hardscape goes to, I mean, that's, it's kind of a balancing act of.
Well, I I think for the most part, we're good with this, I think most everybody is, it's just, do we want these spots down through here or not, I mean, I think that's what we're kinda at.
Down the median?
Yeah.
Do you have any handicap parking in this?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, we don't have it drawn, but.
Probably a statue, you have.
We will.
Just like in our lot we're building over there, every seventy twenty five spots, you have to have two, I think. That's good.
Yeah, so similarly, what would be on, yeah, so we can, similar, yeah, whatever the spot, yeah, there's guidance on that.
But, uh.
Yeah, we'll we'll get that.
So, yeah, yeah, it's just the median, we're kinda.
These spaces here, those are just gonna be lines painted, I mean, right, there's no elevation change or anything in this.
Right.
I mean, that'll all be zero.
So there's no, there's no green stuff in there right now?
Right, the only thing is that curb, there there's a three foot wide, six inch curb head.
We don't want that.
So that, that's what I, that's what I need to know.
I thought we agreed.
Yeah, that's what I'm at.
I thought we agreed back in.
Okay.
December, that the bump, or the, the uh. The poles, the ballards would be.
No, no curb, no curbs anywhere inside, basically, except for the bump outs, I guess, at the ends.
Yeah, so then, so then that question comes up too on ballards on the outside too, to protect from cars going on, I mean.
We mean here? No, beyond the, on the sidewalks.
Oh, well, yeah.
If you're in due way with parking, I would highly recommend don't put ballards down the middle.
No?
Yeah, cause on Georgia Street, down in Indy.
Uh-huh.
They put ballards on the outside and they're replacing them every week, just cause people pull up, hit them, turn, hit them.
Well, I don't think we were gonna do away with that parallel parking, are we, I mean, unless we're gonna do the.
I'm back to here now, I'm gonna freak out, we're not just gonna, this isn't gonna be some wasteland of concrete or.
Well, that's what I'm saying, why don't we do what we're doing and we'll, we'll, we'll come in and do something there.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, come back to this concept.
Would you consider, I mean, you know, can you hybridize it and leave some of these little spots like by this crosswalk?
Right.
At the entrance, it sort of defines it as a, potentially as a pedestrian area or. Creates some interest that people might wanna pull in and see what our town's got, but you do some of that, but then it's parallel parking. You know, you still can parallel park if you've got these, which are similar to what's out front here.
Yeah, we just.
You could parallel park several between there, you wouldn't have to give up as many parking spots, you. You may give up a few, but you'd still get some center parking that you could use a lot of the year and you'd still have a place that would be enticing and. And you'd still have the ability to get people, use that as more of a plaza during the festival or cruise in or some other community use type of event.
They're still making the porous porous blocks that let the water come down through them.
Mm-hmm, the problem is maintenance, if you don't maintain them, vacuum them, then they just get clawed up, don't work.
You guys think we probably ought to do a little something.
Others have put pavers in there.
And those would be down in this end too, wouldn't they?
Mm-hmm.
So I know others, they've used those bricks, pavers, you know, and then you gotta have the uh, the subgrade.
You talking about the bump outs too?
It can never be compact enough and they just.
I mean, we just did green here and here and here and here and here and down here, I mean, it's gonna be, compared to what we have now. Now, I think Steve was saying, you were saying, Steve, you know, basically, instead of having eight, maybe have four.
Four, six or whatever, I mean, again, you get the, the key things or the focal points of this to me look like kinda here. Down at that end, it kinda defines it, whether or not you put something in the middle, I don't, I don't know, but you'd still retain. You know, four to six par- parallel parking spots in the middle for a few.
Well, I kinda like that concept of you kinda define, of course, down here, we have the issue, of course, we're gonna pick up eight feet here, so we might be able to. But, yeah, it'll, it is kinda neat to define the beginning and the end of a space.
So we'll take those thoughts and we'll render something up, fire it back over to you guys, take a look.
Uh, so where were, where were we putting ballards and not putting ballards, I got lost in the ballads.
You do want.
Depends on whether you're gonna have parking there or not parking.
Right, you're gonna want something protecting where the cars park versus where sidewalk is.
Okay, right, so here, here.
Either bumpers or ballards or, yeah, depending on.
Whether it's low, but then here, they were having the one problem where people were hitting them? No.
It was both.
Both?
Yeah.
Well, okay, um.
The only problem is like Key said with the Ballard, I mean, they're gonna be in ground with concrete or whatever asphalt around them.
Mm-hmm.
So when they get bent.
Oh, what was the idea behind the zero approach? Why not a rollback curb, not a chair back, just a nice rollback curb? That would, that would help.
I don't know, we got talking zero entry and I've been places where they are and I was like.
That's kinda what it is, it's not necessarily exact zero percent, no, you gotta have some sort of fall, sort of drainage and everything.
Okay, cause the rollback curb, I mean, when a car hits it, they'll feel that they had something, it doesn't mean they can't.
I see where you're, yeah, that's a, I mean, maybe a better.
Grandma hits the gas when she shouldn't be hitting the brake and.
We had that, we actually had that last year, took out one of our front windows.
Yeah.
I hit the.
And that was, that's a pretty good curb.
He went over the curb.
Unfortunately, those accidents happen no matter what.
Yeah.
She'll jump a chair back curb, no problem and go into the.
Well, I tell you, I don't, I hate to keep harping on this.
Oh, now harp away, come on.
Well, no, but I'm.
I mean, we got two. We got two spots out here now that we fight about every year, who's gonna maintain flowers and stuff, I mean. Now we're gonna add two more, and I I love that idea, Steve, I'm not saying it's not, but. But I mean, we're gonna have, yeah, we're gonna have to figure out, and if we do all this and we do this. I I'm just saying, we got a lot of grass, a lot of flowers.
Yep.
But.
Just put an extra employee in for the job.
Well, you know, that.
How's your, how's your labor force right now, Jeff?
Yeah, my labor force, sixty percent of us were out today over New Hope.
But, yeah, that's something that we'll have to, have to address, all right, but, you know, doggone it, should that stop us from trying to make the town look?
No, I I, I just wanna make sure we remember.
Realize what mess we're getting into.
Because it's a fight right now, and it sure as hell gonna be a fight going forward.
And that's the thing too, I mean. If if we can have this conversation now or later, but we gotta have it as far as staffing goes, uh. You know, and I was gonna bring something to you tonight about um mowing and weeding too.
Right.
And and hiring some part-time help, but our our staffing levels, it, it's making it hard on us. And especially when we roll into the summer.
Right.
I'm really worried about uh being able to keep up with everything.
Well, it's uh. The problem with it is, I mean, just with that, I mean, if we don't, if we don't do projects like this in a parking lot, Jefferson. We're gonna die.
Yeah, I mean, not arguing that one bit, I mean, the things that we have on the books and have had on the books for for six or seven years, we're finally. You know, getting that impetus to to get things done, love that, but we gotta keep in mind that the operational costs, the maintenance costs. And we've gotta be able to account for that with our manpower, uh, as you guys well know, we're, we're down right now.
I mean, I've said it before, I want every, every, every building in this, on this square full.
Well, you know.
And I don't care what's in it.
I won't go there, not, we'll figure it out, Jeff, we'll, we'll get some more help on one or the other. Um, yeah, I don't think that should stop us from trying to incorporate as much green space as we can, cause, you know, this project could be here for a hundred years. Uh, it's probably wasn't, been a hundred years since it was dumb last time, so, we need to really get, get it, uh, get it right. So, where's that put us? I guess we're kinda here, we 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 got this.
Middle, yeah.
We got that, we're do, we're just hashing out this middle thing here, you know, these things in the end, I mean, what are you talking about? You said you could come back for a couple, two or three.
Yeah, we're gonna mock, mock up something.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, that'd be good, look at some alternative, you've heard us all babble about different things and, uh, you go home, these guys are nuts.
No, no, I can't believe, like I said, it's your project, you wouldn't do it right the first time.
Maybe mockups with it being all green and then.
It'll be a rendering.
I like the idea of doing, doing something.
We had three different renderings in there.
Doing something at the crosswalk, any thoughts on, on that?
Yeah, I think you, I think you wanna mock it up of it, what you're saying, you kinda define the things there and see what it looks like and. There may be some stuff developed that you hadn't thought about that's really a real problem, or maybe, hey, this works pretty good and. Just go the next step and make a decision.
Where we at in your list?
Um, going back to your question about benches, trash cans, that type of stuff, did you guys wanna include that?
Well.
Cause what we would do typically is develop a pa- a uh pallet, that's got like three different ones, sitting down, you guys choose from them, things like that.
Yeah, there's a spot over there in North Jefferson, I think they made just four bench, when they did the ADA rep, there's a spot offset.
You guys already have some that you're using.
The bench styles down at the depot, you know, there are some, there's some more expensive that are better long-term street furniture, and there's some that. Are just stuff that people donated, but the more standard stuff you can buy, that might be a good place to start and bring some.
Can we have these ones up on the square?
We gotta try to match the trash cans, existing trash cans on the square.
No, no, I think we wanna go with a new style trash.
Yeah, I don't know who actually purchased them, I don't know if we did.
They look nice.
I mean, they're expanded metal, right, I mean, just.
It's okay, yeah, so 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 give some options for the trash or stuff.
So those websites, those websites on there, um, those are essentially, what we would do with this being an N dot project or N dot LPA project, we would. Propri- we had to do like proprietary material coordination and stuff for the, the bid, but essentially, these are the three that we've used on other projects, um. Speedway projects before, to where we have to specify three different vendors, but.
So that, that's, we can go look.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll make it easy on you, we'll just go ahead, eleven by seventeen, give you some options to look at.
And we did that before for the ori- the design charrette we had before.
Yeah.
Where people put the stickers up there and they voted.
Yeah.
So we got that set up, we, yeah, I was gonna set up a list of these. And then, the other thing too, that we jotted down was if there's any ideas or consideration for the reuse of the old bricks in any locations or anything. Just something to kinda stir up thoughts and things and. Once again, it doesn't need answer now, but it's kind of a, we would put that into, if we need to put that in anything.
Anybody want pop bricks?
Yeah.
Every community I've seen that said they want them, that pile sits there for years, really?
Uh, yeah, I.
I guarantee it.
I apologize, I'm gonna throw an idea for you guys, on the center green space, if you decide to go with the green space, that's fine. You can put the benches in between the trees on, in that green space in Denver. Another option, if maintenance is a big problem, you can go with yellow bricks in between. And the red bricks on the road and that delineates that sitting area with the benches on it and it eliminates, eliminates the mowing and.
Yeah.
And then your trees are in tree castings, you know, between the benches.
Yeah.
That's an option, I've seen that in Denver.
Now we can put the moles down below the castings here, Jeff, there's your mold.
Yep.
Not so easy, we, we, we got problems.
I know.
As as an outsider, I'm I'm hearing maintenance, and I'm hearing these guys, cause I am in their shoes, they need a, what, what do you, how do you want us to proceed?
What do you wanna, yeah.
Which way you want us to go?
We're throwing everything out. Yeah.
Especially if I'm gonna put it out for bid in January, I need to, I need to know which way you.
So, yeah, I don't know about the bricks as far as uh use in this project, problem is they're uneven and and laying them is a burger to get them to lay where they're. So, yeah, I don't know about the bricks as far as, uh, use in this project. Problem is they're uneven and, and laying them is a burger to get them to lay where they're. We used some down at the depot, I remember, to, to, uh, create some areas, uh, but, uh.
And my guess is there's cemented.
I wouldn't push them in a hauler, is all I'm saying.
No, you wouldn't do that right away. The option will be, uh, uh, provided for individuals to, to get a piece of history.
You can use those historic bricks in the middle of the islands.
We could, yeah, yeah.
Keep part of the history, I guess.
Right, that's, yeah.
So, what's the New Hope Development Coordination thing?
Um, so essentially, that's the, where the New Hope development is.
Right.
Really coordination, I can't remember what that is.
I know you guys re.
Basically, we're re, we're redoing.
The stormwater thing.
We're adjust, yeah, we're just accommodating for that storm drain that remained. Yeah, what they put in and then we'll just need to adjust that, so.
Okay.
I, I don't think, uh, I guess I included it on here 'cause I was curious to what, where they were at with the street, you know, up again, or uh, their approaches and their sidewalk and everything. So, I was just, I, but I was out there, so I got my answer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I drove out there to check that out.
Okay.
Um, and then also, just to be clear, like on maintenance of traffic, so, just so there's no surprises or anything, um, we're still proposing, uh, similar to Howard and Market to where it's a full closure, um, but we have to maintain the access to the, to the property owners along the route, so.
So, Howard and Market's, this is a full, where's full closure?
So, it's a closure to temp, um.
Just, just local?
Yeah, so we still maintain a local.
Local access, that's it. So, this is a bypass for semis.
That's gonna be the signed detour, yeah.
The signed detour.
So.
Okay.
Where's that going?
It's out here to forty-one feet, this is straight.
Yeah, on, uh.
Out there at the big billboards right there. Is that where that's at? Yeah.
Yeah, they're by where, um, past stories, way up and you go back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Past stories, as you used to live and come back up the town, you know?
Yeah.
So, on, yeah, the, the south, the Howard and Market job, yeah, the, I mean, the contractor would do their work and then they have to get it, with that flagging around different, you know, people driving in and out, so.
Yeah, we tried to block them off, but.
Yeah.
People don't care. I mean, road closed doesn't mean jack comes in.
Man, I, I can kinda, we kinda talked about a lot of this. Pavement design, um, Jeff, I'll send it to you, um, from the ERC review. Um, it's gonna be pretty standard from the other, it, it'll match the Howard Market job. So, just updates in general, from a permitting standpoint, there is a wetland, um, with some minor disturbance at the, um, at the culvert, um, so there's a little bit of permitting there. Um, Rule five permitting, formally Rule five.
Can't till that up for us?
Yeah, I have, I've plowed it before, I've plowed out the ditch.
But really, it's just, yeah, I mean, that's.
You're not doing, you're not doing legal litigation on it, are you?
No, it's small. We're not repainting trees. So, that's, I mean, that's really, the, I mean, the, the, the square was the biggest question marks.
Okay.
That, so.
I like the yellow bricks.
Yeah, it's a neat alternative to, to, uh, minimize maintenance.
The maintenance is gonna be hurt on this one.
I've been a lot of places where with the brick pavement, they've used yellow brick or different brick to delineate the parking lines, so you don't have to go back and repaint the slanted parking and all that and like a parallel.
Personal crossing.
Personnel, yeah, crossings, you know, follow the yellow brick road or whatever, you know, but, but they use that, that way you're not painting it and it's always coming off and chipping off.
Well, that's kinda neat, yeah. That ping on bricks not great.
And it almost, I mean, it's maybe a scar of the tree and.
Of course, it just makes it harder for the guys to lay the brick.
So, what we did on, uh, sixteen tech, they have a brick pavement and on all the crossings, we did delineated it with a, a concrete header and then used a different color of brick for the crossing. Looks really nice.
And that could be a location for the old brick. I mean, that's.
That's what they done in Covetton. They put two concrete areas down through there and then fill the center in with the brick that the couple's aware to appease some of the people, so.
One of the old brick thing over there, it was up in Michigan, it was up there and they, they used the old brick and they made a fountain for a rough spot. You couldn't use all of them, you'd get a ton more, but they saved some of those and they made, they kinda made the bubbly things on the, I'll have to see if I can find a picture of that, but you could use some of it. And maybe use it in those entry, ballot for those entry.
They did it with all the Curtison parking down, uh, Market as far as.
There's parking.
Canapkees.
As far as in front of houses?
Yeah.
Yeah?
That, I mean, that's, that's what we were talking about at the very beginning, that it's gonna be a bike lane and not parking.
What, you gonna hear about that?
No. Uh, 'cause see, some of those people just have a single drive and one car. Everybody has two cars maybe anymore, so they use a courtesy parking for their parking area. I don't, you know, and a lot of those places aren't big enough that they can double widen their, their drives.
And I think we, I mean, we ran into the same issue on Howard and Market with people parking along the street. Since it's been there a while now, how has that, how has that gone?
People adapted to it on Howard Avenue, you know, I mean, the thing.
People parking on it.
No, but I don't think we had that problem before really much, did we, on Howard?
Yeah, a lot of, Howard has a lot longer driveways.
Yeah.
Some of the houses down Market, they're like right there. Canapkees is a good example. Next door neighbor, you know, they can't get, well, the Canapkees can't get their van and the truck in that spot. There's no place. And the drainage next door, it's a big old swamp land.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
Where's that at? On here? Go, go to their property, 'cause my guess is, just due to the width of the road and right away, you're probably, you'd have, have to eliminate the bike lane.
But that, that's a good example, I mean.
No, it's a great point.
A lot of houses on.
Having been up and down there for years and watching them and having people pull from the doors or driving by and other things.
Okay, here we go.
It's wide enough now for people to park on both sides and two, two cars usually.
But most of them.
It's literally four cars and get, you know.
Almost all those houses that have a driveway beside them, you can park two deep beside the houses, back to the garages, where they get the garages, so they can do it. Now, they've gotta decide who goes out first. They can't park side by side.
Canapkees you cannot.
Yeah, Canapkees, you can't, they do have that, but Canapkees also have a huge space beside them a lot. It's not all small.
That's the ditch.
You've got it, yeah, but you have to allow.
Right, that, but that's a.
You gotta make a place for them to get down there. But they have space should they wanna use it. I mean, you can make a ramp and.
Go to the pavement marking.
Possible if they wanna do it. Do they wanna do it?
Probably easier to see.
Well, I'm talking about that, everyone else from Canapkees this way, there's a lot smaller houses, a lot less.
But if you look at it right next to them, they'll have driveways that go back that they can pull in.
I don't remember that. Well, you know, bottom line, I mean, it, it, it's.
So, here, yeah.
The design matches what we have. I think that's the ideal design to have going through that main road all the way through town. Uh, it makes it awkward for some folks, it, it, uh, but Steve was saying, I mean, the, the, some people, they have to modify their, their drive some and, 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 and expand them some, uh.
And I put in an access for them down there, I mean, you know.
You know, for decades, for centuries, they've used public property for the parking, which is great. And, and, you know, that's something I, I don't bring up often, but public parking is great 'cause you don't have to maintain or clear the snow typically, but, uh, you get the use of it. You know, uh, as opposed to having your own parking lot and, and to maintain it all the time. So, you know, there's always trade-offs in the project. Um.
Yeah, I mean.
What are you looking at? I can't make, all I see is a bunch of lines.
So, that, the, the big green space would essentially be right here. Here's their driveway.
Okay.
See their house, here's a house.
How wide is their drive? Seems pretty wide.
It's a double drive, it's two houses.
Okay.
Oh, it feeds two houses here, okay.
Camper in the side, it's, so.
Okay.
We've left it the width, we matched the width at the back end of it, so.
I just don't think we should make a decision on a project that's gonna be here for.
Well, that's just it, it's gonna be, you know.
Somebody that temporarily lives there right now that has two vehicles that.
And I just, I would say, make sure you notify, you know, communication is the key.
Well, they know.
They've been.
We've had a public meeting.
They've told us that they don't like it, yeah.
Yeah, we, we were. Some aren't happy with it.
The Canapkees, I, I don't, do they own? I would think.
Yeah, they've been there a long time. Yeah.
Long time of, uh, occupants, so.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it.
There's a house kinda corner across the road from Canapkees that shares a single drive too.
There's a lot, there's not just, you know, the two, there's, there's several out there that's, that same situation, um.
I'm guessing fifty years ago, nobody thought Ferguson's would be gone and there'd be apartments there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, so, I wouldn't make, make a decision for a hundred year project based on houses that may not be there in five. We don't even know.
What else do we have tonight, Kim? What else do you need to?
Uh, I mean, that was.
Proceed.
Those were the biggest things.
So, when do you think we can mock up some of those, get it back?
Um, we'll be actively working on the storm update to utilities and then we could fit that in with that at the same time.
Can I say one more thing? Right there on Market Street where High Street to thirty-six, if you're planning on putting benches in the center of that thing, that's, that wouldn't be a good idea.
On the north end?
Been in law enforcement for twenty-some years.
I wouldn't put benches.
Any, any person knows a drunk driver coming down through there and it, you know, yeah, mostly nighttime, but I've seen a lot of daytime drunks that would come through there, somebody'd be sitting on that bench and kill them. And then the town would be liable because we put those benches there for them to sit on. You know, I'd move them to the sidewalks, let them out in front of the businesses if we wanted some and then do away with that, put trees down through the center or whatever you're planning on doing, but I wouldn't put benches down through there.
Or about, we got them between those, if they put, you know, structures, like where that crosswalk is. So, that structures on the side of that crosswalk, if they're between that, between the structures, you know, that structure protects them.
I would, 'cause, you know, you can put ballards up there, they can still knock them, they'll go through them, depending on, you know. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take the risk of putting them in there.
Well.
That's just my opinion, but, uh, my opinion.
I know if we do, you won't ever sit there.
No, I won't.
You'd be the first one out there.
Your, your wife will try to get you to sit out there.
Let me take a break from all this load.
Okay, finally get, get to my other job, guys.
Well, thank you all for your time on this. This is very helpful to design everything, so.
Appreciate you coming out.
Anybody else got any questions, comments?
Where do you have the meters at on the square?
Um, we will have to get you the plans.
Thanks a lot.
Right now, they're in the basement. Such a very inconvenient, but.
We can, I, honestly, we can leave these plans with you. I think we got the water main ones in here. Yeah, you can have these.
Your water meters are in the basement?
He wants some hard copies. All right. We'll make the pizza.
He could've made some broad.
I know, he could've brought it for the, for the group.
Maybe I'm just gonna make an order for him. I should send him my order.
Those center things that they're talking about, check if they wanna do anything electrical in there. So, you can put your conduit. If you wanna put poles or lighting or nothing, that way you don't tear it up later on.
I'll wait.
This fall, it's gonna pump in about thirty percent more funding communities.
We can adjourn and.
Yeah, if you guys are.
I'll make a motion.
Adjourn, all right.
Call in favor?